We need to share a microphone over.
Christopher.
Yeah. Uh, thank you whoever's iPhone.
It's me, can you hear me?
Sure, thank you Commissioner, we can hear you.
So we have more.
But this doesn't, but this doesn't show, it just shows unmute, but it doesn't show video and I don't want to be, so I should be as a panelist or as an attendee?
Oh, there you go. I'm, I'm. We just added, yeah, we just promoted.
Now, now, ready for the start?
Just one second. Oh, Robert, I'm gonna. Robert. I'll just see right there. When it's time to come up to the microphones. Well, up to microphones, whenever, again, just please, we're gonna be sharing microphones, so please just make sure it goes on. Press it to speak, um. We are. We are now live on YouTube, so.
Can we start?
Yes. We're recording right now.
The meeting will come to order. The time is now five thirty-one PM on Monday, September twenty-nine, twenty-twenty-five. This is a regular monthly meeting, District of Columbia Commission on the Arts Humanities. My name is Reggie Van Lee, Chairman of the Commission on Arts Humanities, I'm African American, man, wearing a gray shirt, lady blackjack. I'll now call the role, when you hear your name, please answer president. Commissioner Sims. Commissioner Hapamana. Commissioner Mashesberry. Laura. Laura. You're muted, Laura. Mister Butler. Mister Warden.
Here.
Mister Torres.
Here.
Commissioner Kim. You're muted.
Present.
Thank you. Commissioner Branson.
Present.
Commissioner Menke. Commissioner O'Neill. Commissioner Stedder. And Coram is present, this is the meeting of a public body held in open session and is governed by the Open Meetings Act. Please address any questions or complaints arising under this meeting to the Office of Open Government at Open Gov Office at DC.Gov. Notice that the meeting was posted in the DC Register on the Commissioner's website, DCRS.DC.Gov, on the DC Office of Open Governments Central Meetings Calendar at Open-D-C.Gov. The meeting has been conducted in a hybrid format, the Commissioner's joined remotely using the Zoom meeting, but as well as some of us here in the room. The meeting is being livestreamed to the Commissioner's YouTube channel, and electronic recording of the meeting will be available for viewing online following the conclusion of the meeting. Are there any objections to the agenda amendments that are previously, that were previously circulated? Uh, here an objection, the agenda for this meeting and amendment to the previous meeting, stand is adopted, and I'll add that Commissioner O'Neill has joined the meeting as well. Uh, there are multiple voting items tonight, and they will take place after the respective period reports and during the new business portion of the meeting. I'll now read the landing ballot. Every community owes its existence and vitality to generations from around the world who contributed their hopes, dreams, and energy to making the history that led to this moment. Some are brought here against their will, some are drawn to leave their distant homes in hope with their life, and some are built on this land for more generations and generations. Since the truth and acknowledgement are critical to building mutual respect and connection across all variants of heritage and difference. We begin this effort to acknowledge what is already buried, honoring the truth. We stand with ancestral lands, the culture changing of the scattered people, with their respects to their elders past and present. Please take moments to consider the many legacies of violence, displacement, migration, and settlement that bring us together each day. And please join us in uncovering such truths at any and all public events, and to use such truths to guide the legacy of this arts commission. Good evening, welcome everyone. We have a robust agenda to make, a lot of things to cover, including a report from our director, various committees, public commentary for the several members of the broader arts communities. Tonight we will not have a grantee highlight, but we have a full agenda to cover that time anyway. Uh, moving on to our public comment portion, we have a number of people who will be speaking. The Commission welcomes your comments, they are very important to us, please note the comments are limited to three minutes, please address your remarks to the chair. Note that we will not be engaging into dialogue at this time, the purpose of this agenda item is to hear from you, to cover, and to inform us, the Commission, about your views. Members of the public have factual questions, staff would be glad to follow up via email. Uh, when I call your name, you then begin your comments. Let's start with Mister Jeffrey Cohen. Is Mister Cohen here?
Yes, I am, thank you.
Please proceed.
Thank you, everybody, I took a moment itself to provide to everybody an agenda item which includes a mentorship program that I'm uncertain whether or not this organization really provides in robust fashion. I've been a resident of DC for probably now close to forty years, have been an entertainment attorney and retired, have been involved in numerous entertainment-related endeavors over my career, and I'm at the point now, wonderfully enough, both professionally and privately, I'm in a position financially where I'm able to give back differently than, of course, younger people potentially based on working in career. I put together this because over my years itself, I've mentored a number of people, and I felt the necessity itself to present to you guys what I think is a rather robust program to review for purposes of what I think is a worthwhile mentorship program for DC specifically. As a resident, I think it's a very diversified ecosystem, but sadly enough, I don't see enough people, we'll call it, in the bottom third of their career itself, getting the kind of opportunities I think that can further their careers. I did volunteer once for the organization itself last year in connection with a grant review, which I found sadly enough, a fairly laborious process and less rewarding than I had thought, and sadly did not choose to continue with time constraints involved. But what it led me to understand was the nature of the people itself that were involved in actually getting the grants. These people are professionals itself who are capable of writing grants itself and getting an opportunity. I'm looking at the possibility of people itself who are at the nascenty of their career, or are thinking about changing, or just have such an avocation or love for the arts that they'd like to experiment or tend to try to introduce themselves into those endeavors. I ask that this committee itself consider very seriously the opportunity of creating a robust mentorship program, of which I've put together a lot of the details, and I would be more than happy to not only answer questions, but also be involved in the possibilities of creating such an endeavor, and more importantly, interacting with the private sector as well as the public means itself that might provide the ability both financially and interpersonally for these people's growth. Thank you.
Great, great, thank you very much, I mean, all of us appreciate the benefit of mentoring, so I think that's an important topic. I'm gonna ask our Deputy Director, David Markin, to follow up with you, let's talk about what we do in this other mentoring nature. I think we can take your suggestions and envelop our programming in a right sort of way.
Wonderful, thank you so much, everybody, have a lovely day.
Doctor Lavelle Long.
Press the button on the microphone, it's be, it should turn red.
Yeah, there you go, how you guys doing?
Good.
I'm Doctor Lavelle Long, DC Black Broadway. Uh, I'm also a return assistant. Um, as I look at the panel, I know Mister Reggie Van Lee. Uh, I have several questions, and uh, been asked for help for a long time to hear this Washington DC area, I'm from Washington DC, actually I'm from LA. And my company is the most impactful company in the Washington DC area, but we don't get no help, no one. Mister Terrell Johnson, we're looking at you now, and you have been no help. For anything I'm trying to do, I'm looking man to man in your face and ask for help several times, and still I'm ignored. I, I called you out to my bench to show you my impact, do not show up. So now you're sitting there frustrated, man, that's from Washington DC, that employ almost seventy-two people, kids from four to seventeen. Uh, Mister Van Lee has so seen my work, you've seen my impact, I don't want every award you win in the Washington DC area, still I seem not to get no help. Been overlooked, I sat in a meeting where they asked, how do you bridge Gogo in theater? I've been doing it for six years. I've sold out the MGM, I've sold out the Lincoln Theater, I've sold out the Warner Theater, I've sold out Citywide, I've sold out, I've sold out Atlanta. I have mostly packed the show in there, I don't know if theater company in Washington DC can do what I do. Now, where I'm upset is, I hear that the Arts Humanities giving money to private companies, theater companies that's been murdered. And I'm sitting right here. I'm, I'm born Washington with no help. My cause has been ignored by Mister Johnson. I text him, tell me I'm gonna come out, he don't come out, uh, I don't know if he cares about the community of the arts. Just had a hard all night where there's no theater. I can look at, I can look at, every war show they give here, they have DC Black Broadway. My competition is, theaters are institutions, have educational system, we teach every day, but it's on my dime. And the sad thing about it, I'm gonna keep it real to everybody here, I've done more for my community selling drugs than I can do on illegal. When I have a impact, a serious impact from four to about seventy. There's no company in Washington DC that can put more busts in the seat than me. With no help. So I hope y'all see a guy that's very frustrated. Very frustrated, this is my home. And I keep on begging, begging, I didn't even want to go to Mister Van, Mister Reggie, I respect him so much, I didn't want to tell him. But I haven't got no help, and I've been doing this six years, I've been selling out these shows, these kids crying, they missed it. Only we don't, we don't have the funding to keep on going, and I'm scared that I'm gonna have to give this up. Theater in Washington DC, don't work with me, Gogo. You know, they work with me sometime, say I'm not Gogo, they say I'm not theater. But I'm the only company that can bring four generations of Washington Tony in a building. New and old. That's just my frustration, I'm just asking for help.
Well, I'm from the school of maybe problems is a solution, we can sort this out. We had a very similar conversation with the Gogo community a year ago, and we worked through it, so we do know each other, my commitment is I will work with you and our staff to figure out what we can do. We can only do what we can do, not figure out what we can't. That's what I'm, okay. Tammy Carrington.
I got it from, oh, is Carrington here? Yes, she's here, go on. I just removed it to, to panelists. You gotta accept panelists, there you are. Now she's here.
Miss Carrington.
Maybe come up mute.
This, are you muted?
Hi, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Okay, I'm so sorry, um, it's a lot going on apparently with my computer today. Um, but I am also, um, with DC Black Broadway, and I won't take up much of your time, because I think the Doctor Long pretty much, um, kinda gave an overview of all of our sentiments in terms of the lack of support. Um, I know I have reached out to, um, I think his name is Aaron Myers, and it was a, it was an interesting conversation, nonetheless, I do feel like there could be room for a lot more mentorship as to those that want to come, and really honestly become guided through as to how to apply for these grants, and how do we fit and shape DC, uh, Gogo and art together in order to be applicable for these grants. Um, I do think that Gogo needs to stay alive here in, uh, the Washington DC area because it's the origin, and we have also noticed that Gogo has gotten on the road now, it's in LA, and New York, and as far as Ghana, and we want to keep it right here because it is a homegrown, uh, niche that I think we can capitalize on. And I don't see any other company doing that, merging art with Gogo and infusing a DC nostalgia storyline as we are, and I don't know, the humanities, I've seen a lot of your grants, I've seen, um, where a lot of the funding has gone, and a lot of it's just not simply been too small black theater.
Thank you, thank you, so I see there a couple other people in DC Black Broadway. I'm gonna suggest we do what we did with Gogo, we had a meeting with the whole group and our staff to really sort through, what could we do? There's a certain amount of mythology around what people think we can do sometimes, but what we can do, we'll make sure we do, so we'll set up that meeting. And that's once again, my commitment to you and to you, Miss Carrington. John Dominguez.
Long. You can, you can speak, you can, you can, yeah.
Mister Dominguez.
Give me a second, just for John.
Hello, everyone, can you hear me?
I can, thanks.
All right, thank you for your time this evening, I'm also here in support of DC Black Broadway. Um, I am an actor, writer, aspiring director, I've studied in New York City, I am from, uh, the DC metropolitan area. My family immigrated here from El Salvador, um, they're entrepreneurs themselves, so I know the struggles of running a company. I've made it a commitment as a, as a creative artist to Doctor Lavelle and his wife Angelique Long to help them, uh, bring their vision to life. And I've been a part of, uh, uh, about four productions so far, and I was very grateful to come back to the area, uh, due to COVID in twenty-twenty, and as an aspiring actor looking for work at that time in that industry was very hard to come by. And DC Black Broadway, though, I found them, you know, by the grace of God, and you know, as they say, things happen for a reason, and it's been an impact in my life, and I've seen how they impacted others. And it's, it's, it's teaching, and I could go, uh, and talk about all the accolades, you know, that they've won, of course, Doctor Lavelle has, has mentioned that as well. But I want to talk about more the future, and the future is education, the future is helping younger creatives have these areas of safe environments where they can come and they can learn about this industry, where they're able to express themselves without the, the fear of judgment. And, you know, I aspire to, to help in that, to educate the history of the theater, of the arts, because, you know, there's no one way to create, you know, it is an expression art form, so, um, I've been working with Doctor Lavelle along side by side to create some programs on, uh, to help younger actors break into the industry, to help aspiring directors that really don't have the means to go to a larger school. Uh, so it encompasses everyone, it's a collaborative thing, it's a collaborative field that we're in. And so it's not just one person or one, you know, thing that makes it go, it's a, it's a, it's parts that come together, so, um, I'm here to help them, as I said, with their vision, and I'm pretty sure we can do it, and I know, as you mentioned, other people are, are gonna say the same thing, so uh, just trying to get the message across that, you know, not only are they a preserver of the history, the music, Gogo music, and the culture of Washington DC, they are going to be the, the, on the front lines of trend setting and bringing much more new, uh, creative vibes to the city, so uh, thank you for your time today, and God bless everybody.
Great, great, thank you very much. Ariel Michael.
Uh, hi, everybody, thank you for your time today, can you hear me all right?
Yes, thank you.
Uh, much has been covered already regarding the benefits of DC Black Broadway, but for myself, I was a theater major at Sutland High School, which is in PG County, which is technically Maryland, but is right on the line, um. So I really feel as though this company, more than other theatrical companies I've worked with, is a beating heart for Washington DC. And, you know, a lot of folks, a lot of talent comes out of this area, you know, out of DC and PG and I guess Baltimore and some other places, but largely the, the first two, and no hard words against any of those people who got themselves up and out of here, but they don't give back um, to the young artists coming up the way they could, so we really are, as a, just a six-year-old, uh, performing company, in need of help, and I don't see why, uh, the city that DC Black Broadway represents can't help support us and them in all of their efforts moving forward, and I don't want to take up too much time, I'll close with, I've seen lots of um, productions involving kids, and it can really, there's just one or two ways it can go. It can be supportive, engaging, in a safe space, or small folks can get yelled at until they cry and quit the industry, are the only two, um, ways it goes that I've seen personally, and in my experience, DC Black Broadway, I mean, we've, the youngest person I think was four, and this gal was onstage full of confidence, like she owned the dang thing. And you can't get that level of support, you know, the, the fire burning in your blood like that from any other production company I've ever seen, and that's my time.
Thank you, as Doctor Lavelle said, I've seen a number of productions. Uh, so to Doctor Lavelle, Miss Carrington, Mister Dominguez, and Miss Michael, we will meet, we'll get together and we'll work through it, to see what we can do, at any cost, it's free. Yeah, exactly, so we're familiar with the productions, we'll find a way to, within our mandate to be open, so thank you. Um, Marjorie Nober.
I heard this. Yeah, I just promoted her, she should be able to talk, but she didn't accept. There, she, I think.
Marjorie.
She just dropped, did you drop off? No, she's there.
There she is, there she is.
Marjorie, if you can come up mute.
muted, Marjorie.
Mute, okay.
There we go.
Here I am, um, I'm not here to complain, um. I actually was disappointed in one little thing, that when they did the memorandum at the DC Arts Awards, nobody ever mentioned Rob, Rob, Rob Hubbardson, I was kinda surprised at that, but, you know, that's just an aside, but I kinda thought that he should have been mentioned. Anyway, why I'm, um, um, doing this is because I did finally, and Aaron, I had emailed you about this and emailed Angie Gates, and I went on a massive digging spree, and finally met the person who's in charge of tearing down RFK Stadium. And really, and they are willing to give us steel. Um, I mean, I was first told they were gonna sell it off and blah, 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 but they're really down to the concrete and the steel, everything else is gone. Concrete, they're actually pulverizing and putting it into the ground, but the steel, now the issue is transportation and where we can store it. So, that's our issue now, um, so let's all put our heads together and figure out a place we can store this. Um, because, and, and in fact, I mean, this is a, actually a far larger issue than just the DC Arts Commission. I mean, there's a place in Baltimore called Brick and Board, and, you know, they tear down so many houses there, there's so much wood, there's so many bricks, there's so much stuff. And I know there's community foreclosed here, but they turn around and sell the stuff for enormous prices, so I don't want to deal with them. And, you know, as I say, there's just tons of stuff, you know, all these buildings are being retrofitted, and, you know, a lot of these materials can be used by artists, I mean, if anybody knows how to make much out of little, it's artists. And, and, and RF, the people that, you know, with events DC, um, were excited about, you know, being able to use this for some sculptures for RFK, so can we all just put our heads together and maybe talk to GGS, I've talked to Brian Hanlon, um, maybe some, uh, some of the building owners, uh, that are, have vacant buildings might let us do this, but it's an opportunity that we really should not, you know, let go. Um, and I actually tried to get them to do it in Baltimore when the bridge came down, I mean, I talked to the head of the Arts Commission there, I talked to the mayor, but I don't think it happened, but, uh, we can make the, these guys are willing to make this happen, okay? So let's just find a place to put it.
Yes, well, thank you, we will reach out to GGS and, and make this partnership happen, do that, thank you for your network, to help get us to this point, appreciate it. That's our public comments, we're gonna go on to the director's report. Good evening, everyone, I'm Karen Myers, and the second director for the DC Commission of the Arts and Humanities. Deputy Mayor, now bald with a black shirt. Um, I'm balding, but I, I shaved this morning. So we wanted to, this is gonna be a long meeting tonight, so I didn't want to have anything very long for everybody, but I wanted to give a bit of insight in different areas. So CAH ends FY twenty-five with all commissioner positions filled.
Yeah.
I think that is something that we should be proud of. And forty-five filled positions in the agency with six vacancies, and the FTE count was impacted by the hiring freeze. Uh, through our community outreach, we have touched thirteen thousand eighty individuals direct between grant workshops, events, public arts, and outreach, averaging over one thousand ninety people a month, not including those who visited our High Street Gallery. As a result of this outreach, one thousand five hundred eighty-eight grant applications were submitted across all grant lines. The commissioners and public will hear further breakdowns in these numbers as the grants and public arts communities put forth their recommendations for FY twenty-six grant awards. Internally, CAH is preparing to transition to a new grant management system, this will be a six-month process, workshops provided for both the staff and the public. Uh, Reggie, that is something we should shout about. CAH successfully piloted a post-award workflow protocol and will expand upon that protocol in the upcoming fiscal year. The agency completed its agency-wide desk audit and is preparing to implement the set results. And just so people know, those who had an opportunity to appeal what the desk audit said, they had an opportunity to do so, I am going with all final results as they made, the recommendations coming from DCHR. Uh, Public Art published a collections management policy addressing acquisitions, collection management, including, uh, the assessments and loan program. During FY twenty-five, CAH has partnered with other agencies across, uh, DC government such as the Mayor's Office of LGBTQIA Affairs for World Pride, DSLBD for Art All Night, Mayor's Office of Women Policies and Initiatives for Women Equality, Equality Day, uh, Mayor's Office of Racial Equity, we are part of the ORE cohort, and the dent paint, dent paint cluster, along with bids and main streets across the district. These partnerships have helped us maximize outreach to our community, and last week helped bolster Coda Works, which we hosted at Arena Stage, its first time being held on the East Coast with over four hundred registrants from around the world. CAH has continued its efforts to become more efficient by initiating and updating SOPs within the agency, while also responding to the needs of the community. In response to what we've heard from the community, CAH is adopting the theme "Life Beyond Grant Making" for FY twenty-six. We will continue to explore ways to support and promote the community in addition to the grant making the agency is presently doing. In the October Commissioners Meeting, we will share more of the goals and initiatives we've set for the year, in hope of uplifting our creative ecosystem even more. The only other point I would like to point out is we invite the community to the High Street Gallery to view DC art now showcasing our art bank candidates. As a reminder to the public, the art bank displayed, uh, in the DC government buildings comes from all CAH Art Bank, with over three thousand pieces of artwork, this is, uh, the time to come and see the potential new acquisitions. They show a run from September eleventh through December twelfth, uh, weekdays from nine AM to six PM, that, uh, ends my report, if you have any questions. Questions, comments on the commissioners? Online, for the role, thank you, Aaron. Let's go to the grants committee.
All right. Good, um, almost evening, everyone. A red shirt, white female, glasses on, black glasses. But anyhow, um, thank you all for attending. This is not going to be a short presentation, so if anybody needs to stretch right now, go ahead, because, um, it's really a lot of detail, and, um, it's going to, um, be vocal in the presentation. Okay, so we need your firm attention. Um, first of all, I'd like to, um, provide some context, um, to our FY twenty-six grants, and that's what we're talking about FY twenty-six, because our fiscal year ends September thirtieth. And, um, between FY twenty-four and FY twenty-six, we've seen a ten percent decrease in the agency's overall budget, ten percent decrease. Our budget was fifty-one million dollars in FY twenty-four, and it's set to be forty-five point five million, this comes And it's set to be forty-five point five million this coming year, meaning starting October five. That's a decrease of over five million dollars in two years. Four million of that is a reduction in the grant lines in the particular budget. Um, coupled with this decrease has been a significant increase in the number of applicants, which um kudos go out to the grants team. They've really gotten to the communities and let everybody know who we are, what we do, and how to apply for a grant. Remember, you have to be a nonprofit to apply for our grants. So that's critical, but these are the things that our team is actually telling you and helping you do. We've also had grants managers, especially Terrell, excuse me, who'll come here on a Saturday to help people fill out and complete. You know, applications for your grants. So that's important too, and that goes way above and beyond. Um, there's not been a single grant program where the number of applicants has remained static. Every single one has increased. The success story has been due largely to the work done by the grant making departments and the efforts and outreach of the events teams. They've done a lot of work outside of this building. As we review each cohort of grant applicants this year, we had to make tough decisions. About how many grantees would be funded and how robust they would be funded. We have tried to spread the wealth of awards across disciplines, project types, organizations and individuals, and areas of the city. Remember, we represent all eight boards of this city. We wish we could do more, but we're limited by the decrease in budget. Um, what can you do to help this before we get into the details? Every other budget season you hear, oh, we're going to be cutting monies for this particular program. Or we're going to be increasing monies for this particular program. Right Mayor, right Nina Albert, who's the head of dent pit. We all fall under um these individuals, and they can make the decisions to. Ask for more money in our budget. And that, of course, goes to the DC Council. So we want each and every one of you out there, when you get, when you hear about, what should I do with the council? You can write them. You can call them, and you can testify at these hearings and. Make your own wishes known that the arts community needs more money for the things that we do. Um, we're in a very tough time in our lives and our heels, remember that. What I'd like to do now is turn the um presentation with the specific grants information over to Terrell Johnson. Terrell is not only a grants manager.
Two on at the same time.
That's one way to introduce.
It's a real interesting way to introduce him, but. Um, not only does he have a fantastic team, but he's a fantastic person. He's done a lot, including coming in on Saturdays to help with grant application. And I absolutely want everyone to applaud Terrell Johnson. He is a leader.
Thank you, Gretchen. Uh, before we get started, I want to give a huge shout out to all of the grant managers. Uh, we had a very busy se- season. In total, we've done about eighty-four panels and um a ton of applications. So they really worked hard to figure out, how do we do uh more with less? As we gave our, our applications increased, how do we do more with the less amount of funds? And they've done a really spectacular job, so I'm looking forward to you being able to hear from some of our grant managers. But there's a whole team that works in collaboration, so um we all appreciate all that you do. So, to start out, we are going to start with our general operating support. And I'm gonna hand it over to David Markie to go through that grant.
Thanks, Terrell. Uh, my name is David Markie. I serve as the deputy director at the agency. I'm a white man. Silver gray, slavey here, and dark. Um, the GOS line is uh. Uh, I wouldn't say it's one of the most important grants, but it does uh occupy a a large portion of our budget, fifty percent, uh to be exact. And it's a grant that is ever-growing, our grant program. Uh, very few organizations uh fall out of it. Uh, but organizations are always contributing into it. Um, the cohorts we fund within the GOS grant are. Uh, a group called the Generalists, which are the majority of organizations. They are performing and presenting houses mainly and and arts educational organizations. We also have a smaller cohort of, we call it service organizations. So they are organizations that uh they're working primarily targeting a certain population of of uh. Artists and humanities practitioners uh or specific disciplines. And then last year, for the first time, we added a a new cohort, a capacity building cohort. Uh, to the maze, so this coming year FY twenty-six will be the second year uh program. Um, something that is new this year is there was uh over the years that. Uh, when I identified the community, I did identified the desire for us to have multi-year uh GOS grants. And to minimize the lift from year to year, we understand that organizations work really, really hard delivering the work. So if there's anything we can do to minimize paperwork, uh we're happy to do so. Uh, so at the end of last year, uh we had asked for organizations that were part of a cohort if they would like to opt into. Uh, two years of funding. Uh, so what we're presenting this evening is a combination of some organizations that opted into like a multi-year, so FY twenty-five, FY twenty-six. And then some organizations that uh elected uh to uh apply to a single year, just the FY twenty-six. Uh, the table that you see, the first table, uh which uh details the applicant cohorts, just gives you a sense of the the growth. Um, uh, uh, from uh just how we broke down this year. Uh, so in FY twenty-five, uh a hundred and twenty of the two hundred and five. Grantees opted to uh participate in the multi-year program. And then in the single-year cohort, we had a hundred uh applications, ninety-two of them were eligible. And you'll see in the column on the right-hand side the reasons why. Uh, eight of them were deemed ineligible, they were either duplicates or they had some other uh criteria that deemed them ineligible. Uh, the service organizations, there were eight of them, and then I mentioned the capacity building cohort, uh that number increased last year from nineteen to twenty-seven. So as I said, it's an ever-growing and pool of other applicants and grantees. In the table below, you'll see sort of the timeline from FY twenty-two to FY twenty-six. In FY twenty-two, we had a hundred and forty-eight uh organizations that applied, and the number has grown. Uh, to the number here, two hundred and forty-seven, so almost double uh double the number. The uh, we had, last year, we had thirty-two new organizations applied to the um. Uh, to GOS. This year, there was a smaller number of new applications. There were seven. That applied to the generalist category and eight new capacity building applicants. Uh, but one of the nice things, and I think this was one of the goals that Terrell had for the capacity building program, that. Uh, a good number, fourteen out of eighteen of the organizations that were in the capacity building program is passed. We're matriculating to uh uh GOS, the GOS generalist slash service uh part of it uh for next year. As Gretchen mentioned, uh our budget is uh not going in the direction we would like it to go. Um, you'll see here that uh uh the FY twenty-six budget uh for general operating support is. Just over eighteen and a half million dollars. Uh, whereas the FY twenty-five budget was close to twenty million dollars, so there's a decrease of one point three million dollars. Uh, in GOS funding from FY twenty-five, the year that's just ending to FY twenty-six. Uh, and we just want to note that even though the capacity building cohort. Uh, is considered part of the GOS uh grant program. We do fund it through the neighborhood arts program, but there's a sort of a project element, a scope of work to it. Um, so we pour that of that funding, funding equivalent, fund it through another, another uh program. The table that you can see, uh just for Edwards, do you mind pulling that product, please? The uh, so the first column, uh as I mentioned earlier, we fund. Arts and humanities nonprofits. And what we have done for the past five years is that we've taken. The cash expenses figure from the most recently completed Form nine ninety. Uh, and we use that as a starting point for determining organizational budget size. And so for the past five years, uh what we've done is because not all organizations are. Uh, arts and humanities organizations in totality. Um, uh, and some of them do work outside of the district, because of touring companies. As well as those that are based in DC. And so what we do is we, uh while we panel them based on their overall budget size, we award them. Uh, based on the funding bands that you see on the right column. So organizations between that are under a hundred and twenty thousand K can expect to receive an award of between forty-five and sixty-five thousand dollars. Uh, where they land within that that funding band or funding range. Uh, is dependent on where they, uh how they score in the panel process. So organizations that score towards the top of the cohort can expect to see an award closer to sixty-five thousand dollars. Whereas organizations that land lower in ranking towards the bottom of the cohort, they can expect to see an award closer to forty-five thousand dollars. And that's something that we've done for the past five years. The goal, uh one of the goals of uh general operating support is to. Maintain a stability or as much stability as is humanly possible and to help organizations. Uh, so uh the column at the bottom of the page, there are the uh the, you know, the text box. And shows uh a couple of different scenarios. Um, so if we, if money were no obstacle. Uh, we would propose funding all two hundred and twelve general operating support organizations, not including the capacity building. Uh, uh, to the tune of twenty-two million dollars. Uh, unfortunately, we do not have. Um, so Terrell and I uh started to look at how we could get closer to a budget, which is eighteen point six million dollars. Um, and so uh the, we first started to uh reduce everybody's awards by fifteen percent. Uh, and that got us to just over nineteen million dollars. And then in the third scenario, you'll see that uh we are proposing we fund one hundred and ninety-seven of the organizations. Uh, that's a combined total of the one hundred and twenty-year, uh one hundred and twenty multi-year. Uh, organizations and seventy-seven single-year applicants. Uh, at eighty-five percent. And then the lowest scoring uh organizations across all the cohorts, there's total fifteen. Organizations at sixty-five percent. Uh, and that gets us to eighteen point five million dollars, which is within a budget.
I want to point out to the public and then just remind our commissioners here. We're one of the few, uh I would say state art agencies that, A, you can apply year after year after year. Panel and have an opportunity to be granted. There are some agencies and organizations where you apply to one year and you have, they call it cooling off period. Which means that you're not applicable to be funded. So to organizations that have. Um, successfully, you know, put applications in and have been panelled successfully. And you've been able to receive grants over multi-years. This is something unique to Washington. It shows our commitment as an agency to this queue. The second thing is that, uh, you heard David speak about the lowest fifteen percent. Um, in some places, there's a cutoff completely, which, if you remember, a year ago. Is what we floated from this commission that had a cutoff completely. Last year, we had what they call a soft landing. This year, we were going in the direction, I have to commend both Terrell and David for advocating. For the community in a very particular type of convincing way, so that you would not have to do a hard cut-off. So we were able to ensure that those who successfully panelled received some type of support. And these nonprofits deserve that type of support. So I want to thank you all for the conversation to me. And getting us across that particular finish line.
Thanks, Erin. Uh, there is an element of having to choose your favorite child uh in this situation. Particularly when we start looking at the project-based grants and the grants to individuals. Uh, or we've got a smaller cake and warmers to feed, as it were. And so we're recommending that uh, and I know we're doing resolutions at the end of the process. Uh, but we're recommending that the um, the commission adopt scenario three. Uh, which would fund the one hundred and twenty multi-year applicants at eighty-five percent of their FY twenty-five awards. Uh, seventy-seven uh uh of the single-year applicants uh funded lies, the funding, you know, funded utilizing the same framework. As used for the multi-year applicants at eighty-five percent. And then the lowest scoring fifteen uh single-year applicants uh across cohorts uh funded at sixty-five percent. Uh, coming to a total of two hundred and twelve applicants totaling eighteen million five hundred forty-three thousand five forty-two dollars. And we also recommend that uh the commission adopt the funding recommendation for the capacity building cohort. And that would uh be uh funding twenty-two of the twenty-seven applicants. Uh, at fifteen thousand dollars, totaling three hundred and thirty thousand dollars. And this was previously mentioned that. Uh, total dollar amount would uh come from the neighborhood for its budget. There, we use what we call cutoffs, so we look for a a natural rate in the scoring. And uh the grant manager who worked with Terrell determines that there was a significant cutoff between. The twenty-second and the twenty-third ranked application.
So I know we're going to do one resolution, although I never made it once, but questions or comments that commissioners have? Okay, proceed.
I know it's been, um, I know it's July, but we've actually had two days of meetings reviewing each and every one of these. The grants committee had two days of meetings reviewing each and every one of these, so I'm comfortable the way we're going here.
Yeah, I I do want to make another observation, because for many years, our grantees were asking for multi-year funding as opposed to senior. And to see of the hundred and ninety-seven that applied, one hundred and twenty were for multiple years and seventy-seven single. The demand was there. We've been able to accommodate, so my boss, the team, took a while for us to get there, but we figured out how to do it.
Alright, so next up, we have our fellowship grant. Uh, with the fellowship grant, that is to support DC residents to survive and live in DC. Uh, we have a few different cohorts under fellowship. Our dance, our design, go-go humanities, interdisciplinary, uh media, music, teaching artists. Theater and visual arts. The AHF program aims to support individual arts. Um, individual artists, teaching artists, humanities professionals who significantly contribute to the arts and humanities community. Impact the lives of DC residents through the excellence in the arts and humanities. Over the past year, we've seen quite a bit of growth in this program, so FY twenty-four, we had six hundred and fifty-nine. Applications and we awarded six hundred and twenty-four. FY twenty-five, our applications down to um eight hundred and two. And we were able to award um five hundred and fifty-six um grantees. That was the year that we heard from the public that we really needed to raise um the minimum of that grant from five thousands to seven thousand. We heard the feedback from the public and we reacted, so we, you see a smaller dip in that. Um, this year, FY twenty-six, we got eight hundred and fifty-four applications. So every year, we're getting more people who know about the program. Um, our proposed awardees for this year would be. Five hundred and thirty-four applicants, so just about about twenty-two less than we had. five hundred and thirty-four applicants. So just about twenty-two less than we had last year. While keeping the funding about the same. We have grant managers for each cohort. I'll just briefly through the award justification really quickly. Beginning of the year, twenty twenty-six, applications I just saw a six percent increase in the number of applicants from eight hundred and two for FY twenty-five to eight hundred and fifty-four for FY twenty-six. While this is a more modest increase compared to prior years, we have a significant increase in the number of review panels from thirty-five total panels to in FY twenty-five to forty-four total panels in FY twenty-six. Grant managers add to implement methods to try to reduce the number of applicants reviewed per panel. So this year, we tried to keep it to about twenty applicants or applications per panel. Somewhere between twenty and twenty-four. And we're going to exonerate that. Budget for twenty twenty-six is lower than three this year's budgets, accounting for an overall reduction in the agency funds. With an intent to provide a degree of stability to our artists, we made a funding model that would support artists and award amount as suggested. The recommendation is made to fund approximately five hundred and thirty-four artists with equitable distribution of the funds across the programs, cohorts and packages. Possibly convening scores to percentile. All applicants who scored in the thirtieth percentile or higher were awarded. We actually brought in the percentile as the fortieth percentile, but it's based on a, not a approximately sixty-three percent of applicants will be targeted. We want to maintain the award amount we've heard this year's while decreasing the number of applicants from last year from FY twenty-two residents. And that's due to the cut in funding from last year to this year. So. We can go to the summary page. So what you have in front of you is the summary page. Now just go really quickly left to right. The awards this year we're going to give for each panel, we'll give the number one artist for each panel, total award of seven thousand five hundred dollars. So that's a total of forty-four artists. For every artist who scored in the top forty percentile will receive a seven thousand dollar grant. That will be a total of five hundred and thirty-four awards. The next section that you see is AHF awards per discipline funding model. That just outlines the number of panels that we had to hold for each of the different disciplines. So when you see Dance One and Dance Two, those are the dance panels that we know. So on and so forth. So you can see we put eight hundred and fifty-four applications through this process, which was won't be. So I've seen you to say thank you for the grant manager, their house orders. That was really something else. If you take a look at over the years, just below the box, you see FY twenty-four total funding. We had six hundred and twenty-three. The average award was five thousand five hundred dollars. For FY twenty-five, we had five hundred and fifty-six. The total award, the average award amount was seven thousand fifty-eight dollars. That's taking into account that some are seven thousand, some are seven thousand five hundred. And then for FY twenty-six, we're looking at five hundred and thirty-four. What I think the most interesting part of this is that we are continuing to grow the, where applicants come from and our funding across all areas. So if you look at the first box where it says FY twenty-six applicants, then you see all the boards. You can see the number of applications that we've received from each of the boards and the percentile to the eight hundred. But if you go to the third box, this is awardees. It'll show you how many awardees actually got awarded in each of those sections. So I can wholeheartedly say that we have reached every part of the city and were able to give our funding. This recommendation is made because we made a promise to our community last year when we talked about the grant amount being seven thousand and that's about where we can stabilize people. We wanted, so with that, we were able to figure out how do we fund as close to the number that we funded last year while still keeping the grant amount at a stable level where it makes an impact. So our recommendation is to fund five hundred and thirty-four applicants at the same rate that we funded last year.
Words like that. When you said something, okay, sorry.
And just for the public to be aware, with the fellowship grant, this is the closest thing that we have in Washington DC to a universal basic income for artists. Right? This is the closest thing that we have to this. In many cities and other states, look at this model or strive to get something close to this model. We are very fortunate, the nation's capital, to have this here. I would like to point out that if you are an individual who leads either for-profit, nonprofit, you're going into the arts, perhaps your organization has not been able to receive a type of funding, you yourself noting and doing the arts, this is something that you also should consider for the upcoming year, right? This is seventy-five hundred for those who are top scorers each panel and then seven thousand. This is the number that we heard back from the community that actually works, right? So this is the closest thing to universal basic income. If you would like to see this number increase, again, to what Gretchen stated, right? The mayor, Nina Albert, and Chairman Mendelson specifically. So that we can see this number go up. I just was in a forum last week. I would love to see this number be fourteen thousand dollars. How awesome would it be if artists knew that they could get fourteen thousand dollars to support and sustain themselves? For some, it's just rent for the year. They're not having to stress over so they can do their art. But we cannot do this unless you advocate along with us to make this work. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Myers. Next up, we are.
Last question. So any questions, nervous concerns, any questions? If we're going to the next category, on the phone or the line, rather.
Next up, we are going to go over to our Arts and Humanities Project Grant. And that is going to be led by Sherri. Joe, I'll turn it over.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sherri Feldman. I'm a white woman with brown hair and brown eyes. I'm currently wearing a white blouse and a multicolored floral skirt. I will be presenting on the Arts and Humanities Education Projects or AHF Program receipt. And this grant program supports in-school and out-of-school time arts and humanities projects for youth in preschool through high school settings as well as for older adults ages fifty plus. The grant also supports professional development opportunities for classroom educators. The project must target DC-based educators, instructional staff, or teaching artists. Our maximum awards increased from twenty thousand dollars in FY twenty-two to thirty thousand dollars in the most current fiscal cycle and will remain at thirty thousand through fiscal year twenty-six. Organizations are eligible to apply for up to thirty thousand dollars and there is no match requirement. This cycle, we had sixty-three applications, which is an increase from the FY twenty-five cycle, sixty-two applications. Of those sixty-three proposed applications, we are recommending funding thirty-six of the sixty-three, which is two awards fewer than the FY twenty-five awarding pool. This is a result of a decrease in funding for AHF programming of a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. The rationale for the awards that were made, they were determined using variances that were calculated as a result of the paneling process, which was extremely competitive in this most recent cycle. The awards were all determined to be made at sixty percent of the asking award value. And the cutoffs, which were made well below the fiftieth percentile, was our way of.
Do you need to say change in his attitude lately?
Do you recommend the word later? No, nothing like that.
We have to say for a key or space.
Sure, it's over here.
Excuse me. The, we, we funded well below the fiftieth percentile of applications, which was an intentional reach depth-wise into the applicant pool in recognition of the increased competitive nature of this year's applications overall. So if we scroll further down on the page, we can, we can go to the summary page.
You mean the other document?
The spreadsheet.
The spreadsheet document?
Oh, yeah.
Thank you very much. So looking at this recommendation in comparison between FY twenty-five and FY twenty-six, we received sixty-three applications and are looking to fund thirty-six of these projects, which is a funding rate of fifty-seven percent. This is slightly lower, but comparable to the FY twenty-five funding rate of sixty percent. The total funding in terms of dollars that we are requesting is five hundred and seventy-nine thousand dollars, nine hundred, nine hundred and ten dollars and twenty-two cents. And you can see from the chart on the right-hand side of the screen that we are pleased to have a more, a more equitable dispersion. There's, there's room for improvement, but it's trending in the right direction, dispersal of funds between all eight boards. At this time, are there any other questions that I might ask? I will turn the mic over to my colleague, Lucy.
Hi, hello, everyone. My name is Lucy Hernandez. I'm a non-binary female president in Salvadorian prison. I know that is new. Currently wearing a black turtleneck with, with black and gray checkered pants. Thank you all for being here with me as I present the FY twenty-six funding recommendations for project events and festivals specifically for organizations or also known as PEO. So the PEO grant is designed to support, to support nonprofit organizations in delivering project events or festivals that promote arts and humanities activities throughout the district. With a maximum request amount of twenty thousand and no matching requirement, this program offers accessible and impactful support to organizations of all sizes. It is important to note that organizations that, that receive or currently receiving the general operating support grant are not eligible for PEO granting, but that, that does not mean we do not discourage them from applying to PEO. This ensures that PEO remains focused on project-based support and maintains its distinct role within our broader funding ecosystem. So going over a little bit about the, so FY twenty-six, we received sixty-one eligible applications, which is a notable increase from forty-eight eligible applicants from FY twenty-five. Of, of these thirty-four were recommended for funding. While the number of awards remain very similar to last year as we're only, as we're only recommending for less than last year, the increase in application reflects the growing interest and engagement with the program. We also, we also hosted three public workshops to support the applications with recordings available to ensure accessibility. Despite these efforts, there were about twenty-one applications that were not being, that were not being eligible to continue to panel. Additionally, fifteen of the applications were submitted to GOS and six were submitted to capacity building. So fifteen, fifteen organizations applied for GOS. And six, six organizations also applied for GOS capacity building. So further demonstrating the range of funding needs across the district. The FY twenty-six budget for, for PEO is four hundred thousand, which is six hun, which is sixty thousand less than last year, which was four hundred, four hundred sixty, a thousand one hundred ninety-four dollars. And this, and this is also significantly lower than the budget from FY twenty-four. Despite this reduction, we worked, we worked really hard to maintain consistent funding levels and award amounts. This was a strategic effort to preserve program quality and ensure that each funded organization receives meaningful support. So going on to the, the award formulation process, awards were determined by using raw scores to rank applications. A ranking percentage was applied proportionally throughout, throughout the three panels while adjusting formulas based on the natural breaks in scores and also panelless feedback. This approach ensures fairness, transparency, and alignment with the program. The maximum word amount for FY twenty-six is six thousand. While forty-five applications fell within the funding range, fifteen of those, fifteen of those will not be receiving, will not be receiving funding as, as they're also applied for GOS and they will be receiving funds from GOS. So they were not, they were not eligible. So ultimately, thirty-four applications are recommended for. So the rationale is reducing the number of funded projects was a necessary trade-off to preserve the quality and impact of, of the program. By concentrating resources from the top four proposals, we are investing in initiatives that demonstrate the highest artistic merit and the broadest community reach and the strongest contributions to the district's creative economy. The FY twenty-six grant recommendations reflect our continued dedication to supporting art and humanities organizations that enrich the lives of the DC residents. We are proud of the work that these organizations do and are grateful for their contributions to our cultural landscape. So I also want to say thank you to all the applica, to all the applicants for your creativity, your commitment and your vision, whether you were funded this cycle or not. Your work demonstrates, your work matters deeply to our city. We look forward to continuing this journey together and, and to build a more inclusive, dynamic, and artistically vibrant DC. And going forward to the the recommendation summary, just to go over a little bit of the sheet of the, of the thirty-four that were funded. Eighty-three received over, sorry, eighteen of the awardees received over, over eighty-three in the raw score. And sixteen received under eighty-three. And then going on of the disciplines, I just want to make note that all of, so we awarded throughout all the disciplines except the bulk like because we had no applications for that this year. And then also to make one note of that, though we have a, though we have a system called non-arts and not non-humanities, these are also for organizations that are not, that are also, they are nonprofits that are currently doing some kind of arts and humanities activity. So they, they would still be qualified to do. And then going on for the PEO awards for award, all the awards were awarded with an increase in award eight from last year, only one was awarded and this year, four. So that is a significant increase and just, and then also just the last thing is of all the awards, sixteen were projects, twelve were events and six were festivals. So I use my time to questions.
Thank you. Questions, comments, questions? My math is right. I think we have three more to go. Three more to go. Hang in there.
My name is Andrea Brown and I'm wearing a navy blue dress with a black and white cardigan. I have oversight of fellowship experience grant. I wish to pose the cost of fellowship tickets, professional development opportunities for classroom educators, and pre and post-skill trip workshops for students. Funding may also be allocated to necessary personnel, support for planning and authorization of programs. Organizations may apply for project support for up to twenty thousand dollars and there is no match requirement. Organizations in receipt of GOS or general operating support grants are restricted from receiving PEO but may apply for one project-based grant, including these arts, public art building communities. Public Art Building Communities, as well as one capacity building grant. In FY twenty five, we had twenty six applications and we awarded eighteen. And currently in FY twenty six, we had thirty one applications and I am proposing that we award twenty. Okay, so you can see the allocated budget amount for FY twenty four. We have four hundred ninety eight thousand, nine hundred eighty nine in our budget. And we gradually increased to FY twenty six, so we have five hundred thirty five hundred thirty eight in our budget. We had two panels this year. And in those panels, we had three new applicants, three new applicants to the pool. In our first cohort, elementary school cohort, we had thirteen applications. In our second cohort, we had four middle school and high school, eighteen applications. In terms of our justification and allocation of funds, the funding recommendations were to were determined given variance and calculations to stay within the FY twenty six funding budget. The panel process prioritizes prioritize quality over quantity to ensure meaningful investment in high-scoring application. This approach allows us to offer larger, more impactful awards, revenue spreading funds to then across a larger number of grantees. A score-based score-based allocation was also implemented. Funding recommendations were considered where the highest score set the baseline and the subsequent awards scaled down based on score variance, ensuring their fair performance-based funding between eighty percent in the high-scoring award to sixty five percent of each applicant's request. We also consider the natural gap in scores, which we also call variances, which help to determine the funding cutoff, allowing us to fund only those applicants that demonstrated strong alignment with their program goals, usability and readiness for impact while maintaining transparency and equity in application. For the sake of time, I'm going to get down a bit to our last paragraph where I make my plea to the commissioners. Okay, based on a thorough and competitive review process, I recommend funding twenty of thirty one applicants, specifically eight of thirteen elementary school projects and twelve of eighteen middle and high school projects for a total proposed funding amount of five thousand thirty, five hundred thirty nine thousand, one hundred and fifty nine dollars. While this slightly exceeds the FY twenty six budget of five hundred thirty eight thousand, we anticipate natural attrition due to some applicants receiving other funding sources such as GOS and project-based grants, which likely will bring us back within the funding budget. The selected applications represent the most competitive proposals received, with only ten percent scoring difference between the highest and lowest ranked awardees, with a very competitive year. Demonstrating a high level of overall quality, the recommendation reflects the balanced investment across all eight wards of the district, ensuring geographic equity and impact. We can go to the spreadsheet. And I'm going to be jumping all over this spreadsheet, so please pay attention. So again, we had thirteen applications for elementary and for middle school, we had eighteen applications, which I'm proposing to fund eight of the thirteen and twelve of the eighteen. The total of applications, we were thirty one. We like to fund twenty of those. The average application award, the average award for FY twenty six is twenty six thousand, nine hundred fifty nine dollars and ninety six cents. And you can see if you look on the bottom left, there's been a gradual increase in applications each year, which has been which we've been fortunate to match with the funding rate shown on the left side of the chart. In FY twenty six, you're given the number of applications received in the overall in the overall reviews budget, both the number of awardees as well as the F T E budget has slightly increased, and we have been able to fund within sixty five percent of the requested amount of four selected applicants. Okay, if you take a look on the right side, that they call the the chart there F T E awards for award just a few couple of facts there we don't see is that there were twenty eight returning applicants, three of which were first-time applicants. With this recommendation, we would be providing direct impact for six thousand nine hundred ninety four elementary school students in D C P S and D C P C S. And thirteen thousand three hundred and thirty students in middle and high school would be directly impacted with field trips in the district as well. That's a total of twenty thousand two hundred and seventy four students in the district receiving field trips. Absolutely clear. So seventy five percent of the proposed amount elementary school programs scope directly impact wards five, six, seven, and eight. And one hundred percent of the proposed middle school programs scope serve five, six, seven, and eight as well. So lastly, although I am asking for over budget, it is only twelve hundred dollars. Okay, so with the FY twenty six budget being five hundred thirty eight thousand dollars, my recommendation is to fund twenty of thirty one applicant applicants at five hundred thirty nine thousand, one hundred and ninety nine dollars, roughly twelve hundred dollars over, but with the possibility of attrition. Any questions?
I wanted to wait until the field trip piece was stated. So for the public, we do have a goal that we're shooting for here in the commission that we're advocating for through our our arts education. These the field trip does represent part of the I would say strategy or the commitment from district government. Our chancellor believes in universal art experiences. And so that twenty thousand student number is nothing to scoff at at all. Those young people have an opportunity to experience and be exposed to art, introduced to art in a particular type of way because of this particular grant. However, it's our goal, which I've been waiting for this moment to say this, we with our education, we've been engaging partners. It's our goal that when the FY twenty eight D C budget is put forward, that we have added thirty three million dollars there specifically to ensure that we have fully funded art programs in all D C P S schools. That is the charge. Our charge and what we're asking you, the public, we have a few years, but we want to really educate. We Andrea Mauricio, we have gone out and reached out to partners, D C Collab, so that we could come together. So these numbers, while they're impactful now, I believe that they can only bolster and do even more if in FY twenty eight, we can introduce an opportunity where we have fully put in our programs in all schools. So this is part of what we're going to be pushing for as a commission. So I want to thank the grant managers and those in our education for really pushing this and doing what they could. Thank you.
And I wanted to say when we get to the votes to amplify the point, basically, they're asking for the commissioners to approve twelve hundred dollars to cover twenty thousand. That's really the question. I'll shut up.
Okay, Gretchen.
Next, we will cover our PEP I grant and I'll hand it over to Tanya.
My name is Tanya Myers. I am an African-American woman. Brown sister locks, red lips, red sweater. This is fun. So the project Events and Festivals for Individuals, also known as PEP I program, continues to demonstrate a strong demand and impact across the District of Columbia. The application is open to all District of Columbia residents. Individuals may apply for the project's support up to ten thousand dollars, and there is no matching requirement for PEP grants. So in FY twenty six, the program received one hundred and eighty five applications, a significant increase from one twenty nine in FY twenty five and one hundred and nine in FY twenty four, reflecting both growing awareness and the program's accessibility to individual artists and humanities practitioners. Out of these applications, one hundred and twenty five awards are recommended, representing thirty seven percent increase in awardees compared to FY twenty five, which was ninety one awardees. The recommended the recommended allocation of seven hundred and twenty three thousand, two hundred and sixteen represents a modest increase over prior years. Last year in FY twenty five, it was six hundred and eighty two thousand, five hundred eighty five to meet this demand while also maintaining responsible fiscal growth. The program demonstrates a strong reach and equity. Thirty nine applicants were new to C A H with twenty one recommended for awards and fifty four applicants were first-time applicants to the program of PEP I. And twenty two awardees reside in Ward seven and eight, representing an increase over FY twenty one, I'm sorry, FY twenty five with seventeen awardees. To ensure fairness, the review process was rigorous. We had ten here panels, which was up from seven last year. The award recommendations were based on applicant scores with funding scaled proportionately. The top-scoring applicants received seventy percent of their full request, while others received between fifty and sixty five percent of the request, ensuring a broader distribution of funds and programs sustainability. In summary, the FY twenty six PEP I recommendations for balanced increase, applicant demand, equitable distribution across all wards and disciplines for, again, a responsible fiscal growth, as has been said over and over. We are trying to fund more with less. And we can move on to the Excel sheet that demonstrates. Yes, thank you. So I'd like to focus here, if you look on the left-hand side, that PEP I funding, you can see that we have, we are proposing to fund folks that scored in their panels seventy nine or above, so those represent ninety eight awardees. And some were below, and we recommend twenty eight, which brings a total of hundred and twenty five. I would also like to draw your attention to the FY twenty five funding versus FY twenty six funding. Here we are saying that we want to fund one hundred and twenty five, but a big thing that I want to point out is last year, we funded seventy point five percent of applicants and we're trying to stay similar this year, so funding sixty eight percent. The average award last year was seven thousand, five hundred and one dollars. Unfortunately, we have to bring it down a little bit, but we still wanted to be sure to fund a good amount of folks. So the average award for this fiscal year proposed is six thousand, one hundred and ninety seven. Also, if you move over to the right-hand side, there's a breakout of wards from FY twenty five versus FY twenty six. Just breaking down, again, we are representing all wards here with an increase in Ward seven and eight from last year. Do you have any questions?
Tanya, next up, we will move to East Arts. And Patience will lead us in East Arts.
Before you say anything, I know some people in the community and Drell, you and I talked about, we're called Khalid. And so I want to say thank you, Khalid, for the work you've done with East Arts. So many people have come to East Arts because of the work that you've done. So I think we should give it a splash. Patience, you. Y'all are in good hands with Patience.
Hello, everybody. My name is Patience. I am a fan-presenting person, black person, with a teal shirt on and blonde hair and orange glasses. And I also use still-boned thunder because I have thanked Khalid for trusting me with his baby at the top of this page here. So thank you, Khalid, for trusting me with East Arts and for all of your hard work. And I am presenting on the East Arts Grant, formerly known as the East of the River Grant. It is a project-based grant that supports arts and humanities projects on non of nonprofit organizations that identify as Black Indigenous and People of Color-centered organizations. And formerly, the grant included organizations located in Ward seven and eight. But now the East Arts Grant broadened its reach to include organizations headquartered in the Northeast and Southeast quadrants, which means that the wards four, five, six, seven, and eight are eligible to apply to East Arts Grants. This year, the budget is looking like seven, nine hundred seventeen thousand, eight hundred and fifty dollars, which would award forty eight awardees out of forty nine applicants and forty eight eligible applicants. So that's all of the applicants. Last year, we had forty one applicants and we awarded forty one, then we awarded forty. The budget dropped by twelve percent. And this year, we're still trying to award all of the eligible applicants in across both cohorts. So the award formulation, we looked at the raw scores. The funding formula was created to apply proportionally across two panel cohorts. And the maximum and minimum awards were determined based on the budget of nine hundred seventeen thousand. And then we adjusted the formulas for each panel cohort based on the natural breaks and consulting the responses to applications. Again, the recommendation is to fund all forty eight eligible applications and the maximum award would be twenty four thousand, five hundred, which dropped a little from last year. The maximum award was thirty five thousand. But the minimum award would be twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars. And you can go to the Excel spreadsheet sheets. Thank you. So again, we're looking at the FY twenty five funding where we awarded forty out of forty one of the applicants. This year, we're looking to award forty eight. Previous East Arts grantees, there were forty in the cohort and there were eight new applicants. The previous C A H grantees, forty seven and one new C A H grantee overall. Khalid, was I did I mess up some numbers?
Okay.
Clara was over here. We are awarding forty nine, forty eight. And we have one applicant from Ward four who's being awarded, one from Ward seven from Ward five, which is an increase from last year. Five from Ward six, eighteen in Ward seven, and seventeen in Ward eight, which, again, there was an increase of Ward seven and Ward five this year, which is pretty amazing. Ward five is doing the day. And so was Ward seven. And the award justification and allocation of funds, the recommend we're recommending that the top scorers receive seventy percent of its request, which is thirty five thousand dollars, which is normally the cap for East Arts. The range of award funding is between forty one percent and seventy percent for each request. So the lowest scored application or award would be forty one percent of the request. The highest would be seventy percent of the request. For the first panel or first cohort, that would be twelve thousand, nine hundred dollars. And for the second cohort, the lowest amount is fourteen thousand, nine hundred. And so we know that we need to be awarding and taking care of our folks in Ward seven and eight in this grant, and we want to continue to do that with the East Arts grant.
What we will add is, again, a level of admin. We have a one percent cap. Our way our budget is given to us as far as the tax revenue. We need that removed so that we'll be able to grow and prosper as the city prospers, specifically so things of this nature can be funded. I want to kind of get rid of a rumor that I've heard within the last two weeks. So the people in East Arts, these are not the only people east of the river and in East Arts who are receiving grants from commission. There is a misnomer that these the only people who are getting rid. This is not. People east of the river and who would live in what is considered East Arts have been represented in all of these other grants that we talked about as well in addition to this. This is a little extra care that we're making sure that we're being intentional about showing that we are funding east of the river. And especially east of the river, I think of that there's someone who's known, the city is northern Massachusetts, Massachusetts, but this is something that's really important to us that we want to see grow as well. Just want to make sure I was really clear about that.
Before I hand it over to Gretchen, I just want to say one more time, a review shout out to all of the grant managers. One distinction about our grant programs, all of our individual grants, you have to be a district resident. For all of our organizational grants, you must be a five oh one C three, non five. It's the only way that we're able to fund and give out district dollars. So I just want to make those two things clear. I will hand it back to Gretchen to lead the vote.
Thank you, everyone. I'm looking over there. Thank you, ladies. I know there are a few grant managers that are not here, but for those of you who are here, thank you, ladies, and thank you, Khalid. I remember working with Khalid in the beginning and he talked about a captain. We could not get out of one single meeting without him captaining for East of the River, which is coming starts. So thanks again. And by the way, everything that you just looked at and everything that you just heard was reviewed by the grant committee and the grants committee with full vote did pass the resolution. So it be resolved that the commission adopt the funding recommendations as presented today for general operating support, the capacity building grant, arts and humanities program, and PEP, which is from projects, events, and festivals for organizations. uh, projects, events, and festivals for organizations, also PEP for individuals, for field trip experiences, and for East Arts.
Thank you. It's the word of the president, it's the resolution, and I will now call the vote individually. Um, yea if you're in favor, nay if you oppose, third, second. Commissioner Sims. Commissioner Havermon. Commissioner Mast, there. I'm sorry.
Abstain.
Commissioner Horton.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Kim.
Yes.
Commissioner Branson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mckee. Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Commissioner Sten. Mr. Butler.
Chairman Lee.
Yes.
Yes, congratulations and thanks.
That was Carla, Carla's, yes, too.
Oh, really, miss. Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Before we move on, I want to make a recognition. Last week was the Mayor's Arts Award and the Award for Distinguished Honor, which are our friend, Gretchen Warden, so please join me in congratulating her again. Yay, Gretchen. I was selected by the mayor. Many of the other categories were, I think, were both just selected by the mayor. So thank you, Gretchen, congratulations. Um, Public Art Committee. Can you beat the Grant Committee?
We'll definitely be shorter than the Grant Committee.
Women's, some categories, thank you, girl.
Thank you. I am pleased to report that the Public Arts Department has had a productive year. Um, they've been working to advance the arts throughout the community, and they have carefully reviewed, uh, numerous grant applications from across multiple programs, and I'm proud of the rigorous, um, evaluation process that the panels and the committee members have undertaken. Today, we'll be presenting funding recommendations for three grant programs. The Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant Program, the Art Bank Program, and the Public Art Building Community Grant, Communities Grants Program. These three programs represent a total investment of close to eight hundred thousand dollars in our local and arts community, and will support artists, curators, and community-based organizations throughout the district. Uh, before we move to the resolutions, I'd like to invite Corinne Miller from, um, from the Public Art Staff to provide the committee's full report, which will give context to the work that we've been doing and the recommendations that we'll be bringing forward today.
Sure. Thank you, Commissioner Sims. My name is Corinne Miller. I use she/her pronouns. I'm a white woman with brown hair, glasses, and I'm wearing black, like many others this evening. Uh, I'm the Public Arts Manager here at the DC Commission. Um, there's a brief committee report in your packets. Um, and as Commissioner Sims mentioned, the Public Arts Committee met last week on September twenty-third, uh, and the team presented, uh, three grant lines for reaching you for fiscal year twenty-twenty-six. Uh, so before we get started, um, into these funding recommendations and reports, I want to acknowledge the huge amount of effort and care that has gone into this work. It reflects work that happens year-round by the entire team, doing outreach, workshops, preparing applications, vetting applications, running panels, answering emails, phone calls, the list just goes on and on. Um, and all of this has been done with a special mix of expertise, diligence, and dare I even say love. Um, all of this has been done in the wake of losing our longtime registrar, Ron Hubbardson, in May of this year. Um, so extra appreciation for carrying this work forward. Um, so I will, um, turn it over to Dr. Michelle May Curry, our curator, who will talk about art exhibition, curatorial grants, as well as our Art Bank Program. Uh, and then from there, we'll move to Carrie Kennedy, who will talk about public art building community. So, uh, Michelle.
Hey, everyone. My name is Michelle May Curry. I'm the curator on staff. Um. Sure.
Yeah.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Michelle May Curry. I'm the curator on staff. Um, I am a mixed-race Black woman with a black-and-white patterned jacket on. Um, I am presenting two grant lines this evening, our Art Exhibition Grant Program and our Art Bank Program. There are one that's first in your materials, AEG is first. So we'll start with our FY twenty-six Art Exhibition Curatorial Grant Program, uh, which provides support for the development and for the presentation of visual art exhibitions by district resident curators through grant support and use of CH's exhibition space within the district-owned building lobby and CH's virtual platforms. Applicants must be individuals or organizations with prior curatorial experience. Two exhibition proposals this year will receive grants for curation and installation um, around the following themes. The first is a winter twenty-twenty-six exhibition, uh, centered around social justice arts. And the second will be in the spring of twenty-twenty-six and has an open theme. Um, this year, we are funding two exhibition proposals at thirty-five thousand dollars each for a total funding amount of seventy thousand dollars. Uh, we had one panel this year, um, and we had ten eligible applications, which were, which were reviewed. Um, the highest one per thematic funding category was, um, was funded. Um, and let's see, I want to pull out a full, oh, um, observations. Right now, we can go to the spreadsheet. Um, while applications have increased by five hundred percent since FY twenty-three, um, we had only two applications in FY twenty-three. Uh, we went dormant in FY twenty-four to do some, um, review of the grant program and came back in twenty-twenty-five and had fifteen applications in FY twenty-five. This year, we had ten applications, so we had a slight decrease. Um, this is likely due to CH reinstituting a grant guideline that required written signatures from all participating artists, affirming that they knew that their work was being submitted as a part of the exhibition proposal, which we thought was a wise decision. Um, there were a few revisions made in that FY twenty-four dormant year that we think continue to see increases in applications than FY twenty-six. One is the thematic curatorial emphases that appeal to specific demographics and community groups. We also made organizations eligible for consideration. Um, and we decreased the requirements at the application stage, including making a full exhibition checklist and exhibition rendering optional rather than required. This is a big barrier to entry for a lot of independent curators. Um, and then we also provided a few things like, um, uh, our own equipment for use in our gallery space. So pedestals, TV monitors, storage, calm support, all of those things are really helpful for curators. Um, and outreach efforts continued, uh, to, to be really helpful with personal email invitations and one-on-one meetings with prospective applicant. So again, the funding recommendation, recommendation is seventy thousand um, for two exhibition proposals at thirty-five thousand dollars each. Do you take any questions?
Any questions? We'll go on to Urbank.
So some of them, we didn't put all of them both together, mm-hmm, for public rest.
I think that's what you want to do, right, Commissioner Sims?
Sorry, yes, I, we, we can do them all together.
Great, thanks. So no questions, we'll proceed.
All right, so moving on to our FY twenty-six Art Bank Program. So in support of local visual artists and art nonprofit organizations, CH acquires fine art. Ongoing and annual acquisition of art from Metropolitan Artists becomes a part of our Art Bank collection. Artwork in the collection is managed by the Public Art Department of CH and loaned to district government agencies for display in public areas and offices of government buildings. The Art Bank Collection, which started in nineteen eighty-six, has over three thousand beautiful works in various media. Uh, for the purpose of this grant, Metropolitan Artists find as a legal resident of Washington DC or a legal resident within a fifty-mile radius of DC's boundaries for at least one year prior to application deadline. Award amounts vary, but eligible applicants can be awarded up to fifteen thousand dollars for individuals and up to twenty-five thousand dollars for nonprofit arts galleries or organizations. Um, that number has increased this year from twenty to twenty-five thousand dollars. And, um, we are purchasing artwork by individuals, um, that is at an amount of fifteen thousand dollars, which is slightly different than last year, when our maximum award for an artwork was ten thousand dollars. Um, this year, we are, um, recommending the purchase of sixty-nine artworks by sixty-eight applicant artists for a total funding amount of three hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and five dollars. We hosted five panels. Uh, this is an increase of one. Uh, from last year, we had four, and the year before that, we had three, so we are increasing every year. Great thing. Uh, on to some ranking and award justification. All eligible applicants were reviewed and scored by panelists in online review on a scale of one to ten. Uh, the panelists recommended select works for in-person finalist round review with a standard cutoff of seven. Um, Art Bank is unique in that we have two rounds of review. Uh, so we have a second round of in-person review to look at the artwork itself. Um, in that second round of in-person review, uh, we had a hundred and twenty-two finalists. And at that point, panelists made recommendations based on a yes, no, or maybe determination. The public art team then reviewed all recommendations, and in some instances, we recommended that a work be added or removed from the list of recommended works based on things defined in the RFA, including sustainability or suitability for a public collection, whether the work is redundant or existing, or if we have existing works in the collection, and if we had any conservation, framing, or maintenance concerns. Um, artists are funded in full based on the applicant's request of that maximum allowable amount. So what they say the, the work is, is what we purchase it at. Um, and then we can look at that spreadsheet, and I'll go through some, um, observations. Not going to go through all of these observations here, but I'll pull out a few helpful ones. Um, there was a twelve percent increase in completed applications from Y twenty-five to twenty-six from two hundred and eighty-nine to three hundred and twenty-five. Uh, we saw a slight increase in first-time applications, a four percent increase from last year. Uh, we also continued to, uh, our work to decrease the number of ineligible applications. Um, we got that number from a hundred and fifteen down to just seven. Um, in comparison to FY twenty-four, we had ninety-seven total ineligible applicants. Among the sixty-seven recommended artists, there are twenty-five artists who represent thirty, thirty-six percent of the acquisition cohort that are new to our Art Bank collection. This is something that we care a lot about, so much so that every year we would require that twenty-five percent of our acquisitions be from artists who are new to our collection. So we exceeded that. Um, we also, in twenty-twenty-three, had an additional focus in the RFA that brought in the artist's impact, uh, into the acquisition stage, um, where the artist gave an overview of, um, how their career and work is committed to the growth of the arts in DC. Uh, and we noticed that that has a real impact on, um, the work that we're bringing into our collection. Um, it's, it's in the thematic focus of the artwork that we bring in each year now. Uh, and so again, our total funding recommendation is three hundred and eighty-one thousand six hundred and five for the acquisition of sixty-nine artworks by sixty-eight artists. Do you take any questions?
I was under the impression that you were going to name off each one of the words with the themes and, uh, this, you know, there was.
You like me, too.
It's up to the group to decide.
Any questions, Michelle?
I wouldn't say, we went through OIG report that we all here in this committee remember. And, uh, it's important, the feedback, even in the news article that came out, showed that the community overwhelmingly agreed with our approach. Uh, we've seen in recent news, we cannot be, uh, as one would say nationalist, but DC only. This is a community. Our, our community is only so big. And the impact within that fifty-mile radius is significant, you know? And the work that, uh, people do within DC and the people who are in DC who do work elsewhere, it's important that we support that. This is the only grant line where grant dollars go outside of just the district, uh, uh, the district limit. Only for, uh, the, um, Art Bank. This is the only grant line. And all of our other, uh, grants, uh, no dollar should be coming outside to Maryland. So just so anyone knows, if anyone is aware of something that we're not aware of, please remember this stuff. But, uh, the community has spoken that our approach is true, and more importantly, our legal team has spoken and said that we're getting the right, so I'll say that.
And just for a little additional context on what Director Myers was saying, this represents less than one-half of a percent over the course of a year. So it's a very small, small portion of the budget. Uh, and I'll hand it over to Carrie Kennedy, who's going to talk about the Public Art Building Communities Grant Line.
Hello, everyone. My name is Carrie Kennedy. I am an African-American woman with a brown blazer on. And I'm going to talk again about Public Art Building Communities. For the FY twenty-six, this grant program description is, the Public Art Building Communities Grant supports individual artists and organizations. Individual projects support designing, fabrication, and installing new or temporary works that connect artists and their artwork with communities. The grant is open to experienced artists or art-related professionals, presenters, producers, or educators eighteen years of older and a current resident of Washington DC, as well as DC-based nonprofits, 501(c)(3). Or DC Business Improvement Districts or Community Improvement Districts, as defined by the Department of Small and Local Business Development. Uh, as in past years, the one-on-one cash match is no longer here. For this grant, public art is defined as work cited and installed onto locations that fulfill free criteria. Locations must be accessible to the public without cost. Locations must be exterior, outdoor location, and free of encumbrances. Artwork must be cited and installed onto locations that are accessible and viewable from public space. Materials should be sustainable, no maintenance, protected by graffiti-resistant coatings. Permanent public artworks are defined as existing for more than two years without a de-installation plan, although we expect our public art to last decades. Our work must require minimal routine maintenance. And temporary public art projects are defined as existing for less than two years with a de-installation plan. For the FY, uh, twenty-six year, fiscal year, we are looking at a budgeted amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars to support three projects. There was one grant panel. Our convener was Corinne Miller, Republic's Art Manager. Uh, ranking and award justification, all eligible applicants were reviewed. Scores above eighty-nine point three are recommended for funding. The high score was ninety-six point seventy-five. Um, and these scores were much higher than last year, so really seeing a lot of improvement in our projects. The panel recommended the top high scores, which were all above ninety, eighty-nine, sorry, point three. Allocation of funds. The review panel scored five applications favorably, and the public art team would like to bring those five applications, all scored above an eighty-nine, for to be recommended for funding. CH, CAH currently has funding available for the top three applicants, but would like to recommend two additional applicants should additional funds become available later in the year. So the project breakdown is that there was award for one individual artist at seven thousand dollars and two organizations slash, it's for a, about two hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars. And this is for the top three that currently have. And this is for the top three that we currently have funded for. So that recommended total request for the three projects. If we were to add or fund the additional funding for the recommendations, that would be an additional two hundred and seventy-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents for a total amount of six hundred thousand sixteen, six hundred and seventy-eight dollars and fifty cents. There was an eleven percent increase in completed applications between FY twenty-five and twenty-six. Um, and of course outreach efforts were sought with four PABC workshops or live chats where applicants can, uh, come in on a Zoom and have a chance to ask questions and get a really good look at the application, which is very dense. Um, one of those, we also did additional workshops. We had a Business of the Arts workshop. And we also had one virtual DMV, Big Art and Culture Group meeting where again, we discussed the grant. Of course, I also attended a professional development series at Best Boy and Poets and a Grants One-on-One at MLK to discuss the grant. And of course, the numerous one-on-one, one-on-one meetings and calls, um, were held with applicants. Awardees are awarded one in seven, and that's because they partner, so there's a partnership there. Uh, and then additional awards of five with special projects happening in all eight wards for that partnered group. Additional funding would bring two projects to one for six. So the committee recommendation, should I read that? Uh, resolve that the commission adopt the funding recommendation, recommendation for the FY twenty-twenty-six Public Art Building Communities Grant as presented for the top three applicants for a total funding amount of three hundred and forty-five thousand dollars. Resolve that the commission adopt the funding recommendation for the FY twenty-six Public Art Building Communities Grant as presented to approve the fourth and fifth place applicants should additional funding become available later in the year for an additional funding amount of two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, six hundred and seventy dollars and fifty cents. Um, and if you can show the next argument.
Here, real quickly. Sure, I just for the commissioners to be aware of, we, we do not anticipate that there's going to be some additional funding. This is not the years of funding balance and things of that nature. And so it would have, uh, the various scenarios and based on those various scenarios in, in, depending on the needs of the, the commission. But we felt it important to bring it to you so that if, in the case additional funding does find its way within the grant side, in a sense, we would not have to convene our volunteers back together trying to get schedules. And thankfully, since this has been pestered through the community, there's a method to the madness, in a sense, that we can go with. It's already been approved, didn't it?
Thank you, Director Myers. Uh, any questions about Public Art Building Communities? Um, I think we might have lost Commissioner Sim.
Nope, she's here.
She's still there? Okay.
Commissioner Sim, you can call up mute. I just asked her to unmute. She may be, she's there, she may be, uh.
She, she has to sit, she's sitting there. So I'll, I'll call the vote, uh, to approve the resolutions as stated across the various categories of Public Art. Um, and so I will call your names and we will vote. Commissioner Sims. Commissioner Habib Mala. Commissioner Nassis Berry. Commissioner Butler.
Come, mother of you.
Yes. Did you hear me?
Yes, we got you.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Ward.
Yes.
Commissioner Torres.
Yes.
Commissioner Kim.
Yes.
Commissioner Branson.
Yes.
Commissioner Mankini. Commissioner O'Neil.
Yes.
Yes. Congratulations. Anything else for Public Art? And time to go on to Finance. Finance Committee, Janice.
You can mute. Yep.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Janice Kim. I'm a female with, uh, Asian female with, uh, dark hair and today I'm wearing black top. Uh, we had our final um, fiscal year meeting, uh, two week, uh, week ago on, um, September twelfth with Brendan, Brendan Saunders and Martin Fernandez. Because it's the final fiscal year Finance Committee meeting, we didn't have, it wasn't very large and it didn't, it, we didn't have a lot to discuss other than the upcoming year. So with that, I want to pass it over to Mr. Brendan Saunders, our Resource Allocation Officer.
Thank you, Janice. Um, hi, everyone. Uh, I'm Brendan Saunders. Um, I'm an African-American, uh, black male, um, wearing glasses and a black and white striped, uh, black polo. And yes, I'm happy to present on the, uh, team's progress and, um, normally there's like a lot more, um, iterations of tables that show, you know, where we're currently at in the fiscal year and because this is the very last month of the fiscal year, um, the Finance Committee decided to kind of just share a quick, um, table, not to, um, take up too much more of your time because I know we're, it's just an extra long meeting. Um, but we're just kind of wanting to share our expenditure rate from one year to the next from, um, the time that I essentially inherited the budget halfway through September twenty-fourth um, to, uh, September fiscal year twenty-four, um, to your left-hand side across the three major uh, budget category areas, our personnel, which obviously should remain relatively stable, um, in terms of our rate. Um, then there's grants in which we showed that, um, we kind of spent, uh, essentially um, a million dollars more than we were at this point last year. And with contractual services, which is, I was just saying representative of a three percent, um, increase. And I'd like to also share about contractual services, we were able to expend at almost about twenty-two percent across the board, which, um, is a huge amount in terms of the overall, um, actual amount allocated in terms of the agency's budget and allocations overall. And so I would, um, for next month will be, of course, as everybody's mentioned, the beginning of the new fiscal year. And, uh, we will have kind of fresh tables indicative of, um, all of the hard work that our, everyone has done. Um, all of the votes that came together and so forth. And I'd also like to take a ti- chance to, um, shout out my own team, uh, Martine Fernandez, uh, Kenesha Mason, Lauren Mallard, and Alexis Dillard, um, who, uh, are a part of the Resource Allocation Team. I know you may not hear those names all the time, but, you know, we tend to take care of a lot of different aspects of the agency from, um, developing the budget to execution, making sure, um, everyone gets paid on time, uh, working with the contracts, supporting, uh, the agency at large. And there, you know, there's only five of us kind of doing it as well. So I like to just shout out my team, you know, as well for all the hard work that they do and will continue to do, um, as we look to improve upon these numbers for the next fiscal year. Um, thank you, everyone, and as always, happy to answer any questions.
Want to also, uh, for the public and for our commissioners to understand, uh, we've heard our committee reports from Public Art and of course from, um, Grants. Our Resource Allocation Team, which is a team of only five, they support the entirety of the agency. That means that everything that you heard tonight being passed, the over one thousand grant awards in addition to the procurements and the things and the needs of the agency, support the workflow, all of that. So I think we all should give our, our Resource Allocation Team a round of applause, work being done over this particular year. And, um, this is the largest the team has been, but of course, we're gonna continue to advocate, uh, for more bodies than possible uh, for that, uh, to that particular team. So thank you all.
And just to punctuate that, as much as awardees have been awarded, they really like to get the money. And so Resource Allocation is pushing the money out and as the recording shows from September of twenty-twenty-four, September of twenty-twenty-five, you can see the percentages of money available are smaller in those categories because the money was pushed out. People that were deserving the money got their money. So thank you, thank you again to Brendan's team. Anything, any other questions for me about it, Finance? Anything else? Janice and Brandon from Finance? Janice?
No, next month.
On to next month. Let's go to Governance. Julianne.
Hello, I am Julianne Brienza. I'm the Chair of the Governance Committee. I am a white woman of Italian, Irish, and most recently Spanish origin. I just found that out. Uh, yeah, thirty percent apparently, so some, some investigating to do. Um, I am very excited to have a full another year under the Governance Committee belt. And we met on Thursday, September twenty-fifth. It was myself, Chairman Van Lee, Vice Chair Gretchen Morton, and Andrew Jacobson, who's the Special Assistant, David, and David St. John, who is our, our Staff Attorney Advisor. And we met to discuss the following items. Executive Annual Review. We just completed our second year of the Governance Committee's blind survey with a ninety-one percent participation. We should all clap, but let's not wait. Okay, we're gonna clap. All right. Thank you to all of the commissioners who fulfilled this important oversight role. The committee will work in the coming fiscal year to further codify this process and ensure that the agency has the systems needed for strong oversight. Our bylaws will be updated and the committee will draft the next round of edits in October and present them at the Executive Committee Meeting in November for discussion and review and bring them to the full commission for a vote in December. All members are really encouraged to stay engaged and participate fully in this process. We have made it to the end of the fiscal year and we did it. This is an update on the sponsorship policy. The committee discussed the newly adopted sponsorship and partnerships policy, which sets a structured process or a structured process for supporting new and expanding established events that benefit DC artists and our communities. Sponsorship requests are first reviewed by the Sponsorship Partnership Committee, a group of agency staff and commissioners, and then forwarded to the Executive Director who makes the final funding decision. The committee confirmed the policy will be implemented in the, in the new fiscal year ahead and thanked the Executive Director and the Agency's Office of the General Counsel for confirming the process with an updated SOP. We look forward to seeing what the policy can support for district presidents and visitors and to a transparent process in the year ahead. Commissioner Conflict of Interest Forms. All commissioners are required to complete their FY twenty-five, twenty-six Conflict of Interest Disclosure Documents. If you have not done so, please refer to the email. I was gonna send it yesterday and I forgot. I'll send it tomorrow. Sorry. These forms, just in case I didn't know this, and so I'm making this known, these forms are available to the public on the agency's website. So please do, do submit them so that we are in full compliance with our ethics policies. We, uh, as a committee, uh, um, agreed on our dates for meetings next year and those are listed in the, uh, Governance Committee Report. And that is the report for today and for this year.
Thank you, thank you. Any questions, comments, any issues? I'm sure we are, we all join in. Thank you, Julianne, for taking on the thankless task of Governance Space. And she did it with great aplomb. So thank you. Um, Community Advisory Committee. I don't think Cicely's here, but perhaps Grace is covering something.
Yeah, Grace.
Grace.
Yes, I'm here. Hi, everyone. I am a black American woman with brown hair and a black shirt. And I'll be going over our, I'll, we'll have, um, a brief report, but a special report this year or this month. Uh, we'll report out a bit larger next month. Uh, but knowing that this was a heavy grants in, um, Public Arts Facing Meeting, we wanted to make sure we could provide our special report and then come back with even more updates, um, next month. So we're excited to, uh, have our final report out concerning our GoGo efforts, uh, during this year. And you can go to the next slide. Um, as, as this year started off, we were able to have a conversation with members of the GoGo community. We met them and, uh, via meet and greet. And, uh, we brought together not only our executive leadership, but also, um, our senior leadership suite as well. So for those who may not be aware, GoGo has served as the official music of DC since twenty-twenty and it plays a significant role in the cultural expression of the district. So as I mentioned, um, earlier, this fiscal year, we welcomed the community into our, into, um, our space and we had a Q and A and answered as many questions as we could. We also heard back from the community as to ways we can greater support their, um, authentic and local artistry. And so after hearing from that community, we launched our inaugural GoGo Summer Series. And so I wanted to share some of the wonderful things we were able to do and the impacts that we've had. And go to the next one. So, uh, beginning in early June, after we've had those conversations and we heard back from the, uh, community from our meet and greet, uh, all the way lasting, all the way to earlier this month, we've hosted, uh, our summer series, we've supported the authentic music of the district and things such as performances, which also supported local businesses and CBEs as we celebrated the authenticity of our great district all summer long. Um, and I do want to thank so many of our staff members, community members, and commissioners who joined us as well. You can go to the next slide. So here's a bit of our community impact. We listened and we responded. In that response, we were able to support three of the legacy bands throughout the district, uh, five newer bands, always wanting to continue to grow, uh, the, the music of the district and an artistic duo. There's a lot of nuance within the GoGo community and we wanted to celebrate that nuance. Uh, we noticed that there was a greater, um, response when it came to our GoGo fellowship. So you already heard a lot of the numbers, but based on the, uh, reception that we had and applicants that we had in previous years, we've now seen a seventy-two point, I'm sorry, a sixty-two point five percent growth in applications. So people heard us, they saw us, they enjoyed the series, they received the resources, and they responded. We also showed up to the challenge. We had two executive leaders present. We had, uh, five dedicated staff members that continued to work on those efforts, uh, and to br- and to bring them to pass. We also had three commissioners that came out and celebrated, um, and, uh, enjoyed and, and cultivated connections to the communities as well. And we had two dedicated gap members who are a part of our outreach efforts. We were able to amplify things all throughout, um, DC government, things such as the Mayor's Office on Women's Policies and initiatives supporting Women's Equality Day. We were not only able to, uh, bring the music and culture and celebration, we were able to bring an all, um, women, female identifying GoGo band together through the collection of various GoGo bands to bring those, those, uh, those singers and, and musicians and artistry all into one space to celebrate the strength of women and unity. And we were also able to celebrate and contribute to Art All Night. And in, as I mentioned, we were, uh, not only able to celebrate culture, but also to amplify businesses, um, not only, uh, in Ward Seven and Eight, but also in Ward Five. And eight of them were women-owned, fifteen were BIPOC, we had three new activations and we were able to shepherd one new DCCBE so that they'll be able to continue to amplify their small local business throughout DC Gov, through partnerships and things of that nature. And we heard back from the community. Um, we listened and we responded. And the feedback was in real time. People were sharing about how they didn't know about the grants or they had given up because they just weren't sure they had the support that they needed. And then seeing us and then speaking with us and sitting with us and meeting them where they and meeting them where they were, they felt that support and they applied. As we saw, uh the numbers have risen across the board, so we're really excited about that. Um also granting greater access to that artistry. Individuals who may not have had certain platforms or access, we as an agency were able to provide that and to restore connection. So we just want to thank you all again for coming, for um sharing your voices, for coming out and celebrating and supporting. You can go to the next one. There are some key people though that I absolutely want to celebrate. Uh obviously, these photos won't cover everyone, but I did want to say that we were the success that we were because of our leadership, our staff, and our GAF team members. So if you came, if you saw it, if you celebrated, if you amplified, if you contributed, we were a suc- we were a success because of you. So thank you so much. And I absolutely have to do some special shout-outs to our chairperson, uh Reggie Van Lee, to Commissioner Cora Masters Berry, as well as to Commissioner D- uh Demetrius Butler. Without your leadership, your passion, and your overwhelming support, this wouldn't have been possible. So our success is proof of your power and proof of your leadership and the strength that you carry. Um especially want to shout out uh Cora Masters Berry and Demetrius Butler, as they are our commissioners from the Great Ward Eight, and a lot of our work um was central in in that area as well. So thank you, thank you, thank you for your contribution and for your never-ending passion and support. And then I, again, I couldn't, I couldn't cover everyone, and knowing that um we were focusing on grants and public arts, I wanted to make sure that I did cover and shout out as many people as I could. So thank you to staff, thank you to all of our leadership across all departments. Thank you for um our communications and our um events teams and everyone that helped to partner with us, social media. We couldn't have done this without you, Outreach. Thank you so much. And that's, you know, only the beginning. There is, you can, you can go to the next slide. Um there is more to come. We're excited to continue to do the work, to amplify the authentic music genre of the district, and we can't wait to share more. Uh and we'll give additional updates in the coming months, but we're happy to close out this fiscal year strong. Thank you so much for all of your support, and I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Ladies, and thank you to you, Grace, for putting this all together and capturing all this, because this was you, you kind of kept us on a cool path as we were trying to navigate how to, as our our chairman said, we don't back down from the challenge. We always see a solution. So thank you, and I've got to say thank you to Aunt uh Auntie, because she would let me, she, you, you wear me out. If we talk about uh uh GoGo and not mention her at all, but.
Absolutely. Thank you for serving as our liaison. Yes, one hundred percent.
That's a wishable. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Thank you, Grace. Questions, comments, any commissioners? Um and as I said, our relationship with the GoGo community did not start like this. This was a great success to them, and so if I could look forward, I'm hopeful that DC Black Broadway will be able to tell a similar story for next year. We worked with you and we worked through issues and were able to be helpful in a way that we could be helped.
Well, I, I, excuse me, I'd like to thank Grace for the wonderful graphically designed report with a little wiggle room here and there. It's cute, and it was nice and informative, but I am confused uh with the com- comparison of the Black Broadway issues or com- or um uh complaints or requests with GoGo. I don't, I don't understand how they, how they intersect.
I was just saying, in general, for every problem, there's a solution, and we started.
Yeah, I know, but they, but they, but I, I wasn't referring to what you said, the chairman. I was referring to what they said, because they kept talking about GoGo, and I had planned to raise that, and then try to figure out how those two things, you know, are nexus or, you know, I conflate each other. I, I didn't know.
We'll, we'll handle that offline.
Yeah.
We, we will have. Good. Um so is there any unfinished business?
Yes. Real quickly, to the community and then to our commissioners, uh we sent out a newsletter, and uh we also get reports about our open rates, about our uh our newsletters. We want the community to really open the next uh newsletter. This is the reason why. Because last year, our commissioners and the community asked for a checklist on what we needed to have so that they would be able to be in front of things, so they will have everything they needed, so that when the awards were announced, we were not chasing, you know, uh the roadmaps. And the next uh, and the next newsletter, our team has provided a point-by-point checklist toolkit, resource kit, everything you need to go to, who you need to reach out to, when you need to do so, this, that, and the other, so that we have empowered or given you, equipped you to help yourself along this process and help us to help you along the process as well. This is the first time we've been able to have this resource out to the community, and this is a response from our commissioners and also the community. So we have added another step and layer and help uh to ensure that these awards are able uh to be given out in a good amount of time.
Any other unfinished business? Uh here in non, we shall proceed to new business. Uh we do need to vote on the approval of meeting dates for FY twenty-six. Julianne talked about the Mauro Hito. The full commissioner meeting dates proposed for the next fiscal year on December fifteenth, March sixteenth, June fifteenth, and September twenty-eighth. We'll send that out to you as well. Am I reading correctly?
No, you're right. Hey, hey, keep pay, pay the part, page further down.
So I was reading from.
Socially governance.
Welcome, Mr. Vino, please.
I'm so sorry, I said.
I'll try it again. October twentieth, twenty-twenty-five, November seventeen, December fifteenth, January twenty-six, twenty-twenty-six, February twenty-third, March sixteenth, April twentieth, May eighteen, June fifteen, July twentieth, August seventeenth, and September twenty-eighth.
Lock up. Don't you get out on the Friday weekend.
I will.
Any connection you have.
Do a, a community vote instead of individual votes, normally do. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. Any extensions? So the meeting dates hold with the correction of the chairman, giving wrong dates, having been given wrong information. No voucher. The next meeting date of the commission will be held Monday, October twentieth, as I just said, at five thirty PM. The time is now seven twenty-seven PM. I thank you all for hanging there. This was a big meeting, but it just is a synopsis of the work that the team had done. Commissioners and staff.